Good morning and welcome to the regular session of Elgin County Council. It is November the fourteenth, nine AM. I will call this meeting to order. First order of business is the adoption of the minutes.
Be it resolved that the minutes of the meeting held on October twenty fourth, two thousand and twenty-three be adopted?
Everyone's had opportunity to peruse those minutes. If there are no errors or omissions, I would entertain a mover and seconder. Counselor Hens and Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. I'll remind members of any disclosures of pecuniary interest in the general nature thereof. I see none. Section four, presenting petitions, presentations, and delegations. This morning, we have Kimberly Earls, Executive Director, and Bernia Martin, Chair of the Board of Directors, South Central Ontario Region Economic Development Corporation, the SCORE EDC member update. Now invite Kim and Bernia to the podium.
Good morning, Warden Ketchabah, members of council and staff. It's our delight to be here this morning. I am Bernia Martin, Chair of the Board, elected as a representative from Oxford County, here with Kim Earls, our Executive Director. So, Score Economic Development Corporation began in two thousand and ten and has been representing the five counties of Norfolk, Grant, Oxford, Middlesex, and Elgin. Our ask today is for an increase in the membership of five thousand dollars from twenty-five thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars. It is the first increase since two thousand and ten. And of course, a twenty-five thousand dollar in two thousand and ten today in a two thousand and twenty-three is actually due to inflation is just a fifteen thousand dollar membership. And so it is very difficult as an organization to continue doing more and more and more with less and less and less. So I'm going to leave the details up to Kim to talk about what we do as an organization and how we reflect your needs and interests here in Elgin County with two very specific areas of focus that we have noticed in two thousand and twenty-three and continue in the next couple of years. One is the provincial mandate for housing and how that impacts us regionally, our transportation network, education, and so many other ways that that impacts us. And the second lens that we find of tremendous importance is the investment of automotive EV plant here right in this region. And how will that impact our region economically? And what is the work that we need to do to prepare this region for that investment? So I'll leave the floor to Kim to go through our presentation, and then it will be available for questions.
Thank you so much, everyone. It's a pleasure to be here this morning. Just a little bit of background information on SCORE. So we were, as Chair Martin mentioned, we were created in two thousand and ten because the councils of the day recognized that with changes in our economic base, that it made sense for us to come together and pool resources for the wider regional good. Next slide, please. So our current strategic plan, we have three priorities: infrastructure, supporting economic development, human capital supporting economic development, which workforce, education, and training is encompassed in there, and our key sector is agriculture and food. And in the new year, we hope to be undertaking a new or a refreshed strategic plan that will help us view those priorities in a new lens. Next slide, please. And so, as we kind of always like to say, and you've probably heard me say this many times to you all in this venue, is we feel that SCORE is right-sized so that we have those common economic issues and challenges and opportunities. And while we are large enough to influence some policy funding and programs across the province, we are also small enough to come to agreement and consensus and for it to have an impact at this five-county regional level. Next slide, please. And so this is just a little bit of a return on investment for the thirty thousand dollar membership. And we've tried to break it down into direct funding received by SCORE that has went to work in various projects and initiatives across the region, and then ones that we've supported other municipalities, organizations that service the region, and then wider pockets of funding that we've influenced over the past, I guess, a little over a decade now that we've been an organization. And so you can see the return on investment for the twenty-five thousand has been significant over the past ten years. This actually is just looking at the past two years. And so again, that puts some lens on to the return of investment that you're getting for your membership dollars. Next slide, please. Over the past couple of years, we've been focusing pretty significantly on infrastructure, and that has taken an even further focus into the transportation lens. We focused a lot on inter-community transportation, and some of that was a result of the provincial community pilot fund program that some communities in the region receive. Now, I know that you did not receive that here in Elgin, but part of the SCT or Southwest Community Transit Intercommunity Network has been to look at ways that we can still serve and leverage the other partners' resources and assets so that we can serve here in Elgin as well. So there are some routes that currently go into Bayham through some of the other member municipalities, but we've also had talks. We've recently completed a regional needs analysis project which looked at what the region as a whole would need as inter-community transportation. And of course, that supports workforce, seniors aging in place, newcomers. And one of the sort of anchors that was prevalent throughout that project was the need to support the Amazon plant here in Elgin County as well as other business initiatives that are happening. So that's definitely something that's been on our radar and is part of the recommendations of that report. Next slide, please. One of the other projects that kind of falls under that infrastructure transportation portfolio was the initiative, sorry, I'm losing my voice this morning, was the initiative to support the reemergence of the short line rail. And that short line rail basically runs from just east of Saint Thomas through Oxford County and into Norfolk County. And along that line, of course, in the town of Elmer, the ethanol plant is served by that line. But it also contributes to the ongoing importance of the agricultural sector, particularly grain farmers within the region utilizing the rail. Again, a lot of that tied to that Elmer facility as well as manufacturing facilities along that line. So again, we foresee that as being a very important piece of infrastructure as you have investments grow and continue to expand here in Elgin County and across the region. So that's definitely been something that's been a focus for SCORE EDC. And next slide, please. And again, with all of that, supporting all of our projects and initiatives and our priority areas for our strategic plan comes a lot of advocacy work. Over the past year, we have had sixteen ministerial meetings of which you are all always welcome to attend with the scoreboard of directors. And if you haven't in the past, I hope that you do. We have some meetings that we set up, of course, at the Roma and AML conferences and those types of things, but we also have other ongoing conversations with the ministries. And I'll give a couple of examples of that. For instance, I know that Deputy Mayor Jones was able to attend a SCT meeting on behalf of the region to talk and discuss about the importance of inter-community transit. As well, we had a MTO staff come down from Toronto, this was probably a month ago, and we were able to tour them around the area so that they could see what are roads, what are inner-community transit, what our infrastructure looked like in light of the new investment that we'll be seeing. So again, those ongoing advocacy efforts have been very important to our priorities. Next slide, please. And here I've just outlined how we feel that SCORE priorities, activities, and initiatives align with the strategic priorities of the county. Next slide, please. And again, I just wanted to reiterate that the partnership of SCORE, we've been in place since two thousand and ten. We've had longstanding successes, and that ROI page outlines some of that as well as some of the current projects and activities that we've been working on. And as one of our members have said, you know, we do see some great successes year to year and have some good initiatives that are happening on an annual basis, but really, one of the most powerful things we think of at SCORE is the cumulative effort and the having a regional organization in place to respond to opportunities and challenges that may arise across the region. Next slide, please. And with that, we'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Kim and Bernia, for that presentation. I'm going to open the floor up to any questions. Does anyone have any questions, comments? Yes, Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Basically, a few comments and then a question. I can remember back in two thousand and ten, Kim, remember when this started? I believe at that time, we got a chunk of money from the province, I think in an amount of millions of dollars at that time. And the tariff for the counties, I think, was five thousand at the time, and it got raised to twenty-five thousand, I remember. In fact, I think I was one of the people that voted against going to twenty-five thousand way back in two thousand and twelve or something like that. I'm inclined to support the increase to thirty thousand because I think that you're talking about two items that are very important to this area. One is the increase and hopefully the support rather of inter-county transportation. I'm not sure why Elgin didn't get the grant at that time or at this time, but certainly it is something that is very important to Elgin County. And I hope that you continue to press whoever you have to press in order to get that kind of support. Again, my question is, what kind of support are you providing to get inter-county transportation? And secondly, what kind of support are you giving to the Cayuga Line? Because you mentioned that as one of your items. Thank you.
Sure. So the support that we're providing or looking at through the inter-community transit is, we've been, so we're a nine-member membership within the SCORE membership, if you will, of the Southwest Community Transit. So we went beyond our SCORE borders to really be inclusive in supporting communities starting transit systems. What the needs analysis project that we've just completed looked at was what would an inter-community transit system look like if it had started with a regional lens rather than individual municipalities or systems sort of coming up and developing their transit and their routes on their own? So with that in mind, Elgin obviously is a very integral part of the region. And when you look at that Highway Three corridor, when you look at businesses that are here already that may be struggling to attract or retain workforce from just even outside of their community. So if you're traveling from, say, Elmer to, you know, Belmont or Elmer to Tilsenburg, you know, there really is very little means to affordably provide transit there. So the project that we looked at, that we undertook, really looked at where it would make sense to develop those routes and who we would have to connect with. So we have connected with, there's the four counties transit, which kind of serves the most westerly part of Elgin as well as some of Middlesex. We've connected with those folks, and we're continuing to work with MTO to see if there is potential and possibility for us to receive some further funding outside of the gas tax program and maybe to make some modifications to the gas tax program so that rural communities are more able to access those fundings at an appropriate level. I hope that answers that.
If I may, so you are working on other things besides the delegations to the ministers?
Yes.
What about the Cayuga Line?
And then for the Cayuga Line, so we have put in an application to the National Trade Corridor Fund, and we came before council prior to that application just to let you know and let you know what those project dollars would be. The project itself is around eight million. We requested about three and a half million from the National Trade Corridor Fund, which is a relatively modest ask for that fund. We still have not heard back, but as soon as we do hear back, we'll obviously let you know, and hopefully that will continue to spur investment. But in the meantime, we've also been supporting the short line rail operator that's currently operating along that line, providing introductions into Elgin, Norfolk, and Oxford and other communities so that they have a viable business model while we're hopefully waiting for that federal investment.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Yep, Counselor Zegar.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just wondering, we don't have the details of your budget here, but what does the five thousand dollar do? Or without the five thousand, what would you not be able to do?
That is an excellent question. Thank you, through the Warden. Really, that five thousand dollars, as Chair Martin mentioned, really brings us up to close to where we were when we initially started at that twenty-five, but that five thousand dollars enables us to have matching funding for programs and initiatives that might have a matching component so that we can leverage those dollars and come to the table as partners or coordinators of large-scale projects. We're very fortunate right now. We also have a, in addition to our Board of Directors, we have our Resource Advisory Committee, which is senior active staff or CAOs from each of the five counties. And Carolyn is our Chair of that committee right now. And so again, looking at those wider regional projects, that five thousand, it seems, you know, like maybe a nominal amount, but again, the whole premise of SCORE is when we combine those five thousand dollars across the five counties, we then have some leverage to create a larger project.
Yep, Counselor Zegar.
Mr. Warden, so may I recommend that the decision be referred to the Budget Committee for consideration? And if the Budget Committee wants a little bit more information about the overall budget and how the funds are used, I think that would be appropriate.
I think that's reasonable. Yeah, I'll second that. Any additional questions before we call the question on that? Okay, again, thank you very much, Kim and Bernia, and also Carolyn, who's hiding back there. Thank you for your efforts with the Resource Advisory Council. Certainly appreciate it. Jenna, we're ready for a question?
Be it resolved that the presentation from SCORE EDC be received and filed and that the Elgin County Budget Committee be directed to consider the thirty thousand dollar SCORE membership fee as part of the two thousand and twenty-four budget deliberations?
Okay, it was moved by Counselor Zegar and seconded by Counselor Sloan. All in favor? That's carried. Again, thank you. Brings us to section five, Committee of the Whole.
Be it resolved that we do now move into Committee of the Whole?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Whitner will move. Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That is carried. Section six, Reports of Council Outside Boards and Staff. Six-one, Warden Ketchabah, Warden's Activity Report, two thousand and twenty-three. Okay. Not much to add. The report is before you, a number of activities that I have attended on behalf of the county. And I would entertain any questions if anyone has any. Looks like it's fairly self-explanatory. Okay, Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that the report titled Warden's Activity Report, October two thousand and twenty-three, dated November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from Warden Ketchabah be received and filed?
Mover and seconder, please. Counselor Latham and Counselor Hens will move. All in favor? That's carried. Six-two, Accessibility Coordinator, Updates to the Accessibility Policy, Emergency Response Policy, and Accommodations Policy. Good morning, Sarah.
Good morning. Thank you for having me. Through the Warden, to members of councils, please see the attached report, which outlines the updates made to the three policies. The three policies are the accessibility policy, the emergency response for employees with disabilities policy, and the accommodation policy. The intention behind making the changes was to ensure the policies remain aligned with the relevant legislation and compliance requirements. The changes to the accessibility policy included rearranging the order to match the Integrated Accessibility Standards Regulation to make information easier to find and access. Several sections were also added to better meet the IASR requirements and best practices. The changes to the emergency response policy included adding more details on what to do as a designated person, adding roles and responsibility sections, and including tips on telling to stay safe during an emergency. The accommodation policy had minor changes to the stakeholder responsibility section, and the definition section was added. The changes have been reviewed and approved by the Joint Accessibility Advisory Committee. Full details of the changes are outlined in the report and, of course, in the attached policies. I am happy to answer any questions or take feedback. Thank you.
Thank you for that report, Sarah. Does anyone have any questions regarding changes to these policies? Yes, Counselor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Just a comment. I noticed for the first time that we have subtitles in our video. So that's fair. And actually, the subtitles keep up with the voice, so whatever application you're using is very good. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that comment. They're mesmerizing, aren't they? That's why they're mesmerizing. Any additional questions, comments? Perfect. Okay, thank you very much again for that, Sarah.
Thank you.
Be it resolved that the report titled Updates to the Accessibility Policy, Emergency Response Policy, and Accommodations Policy, dated November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, from the Accessibility Coordinator be received, filed, and approved?
Do we have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Cookett will move, and Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six-three, the Acting Manager of Planning, Municipality of Bayham Official Plan Amendment Number Thirty-four, Part of Lots Ten and Eleven, Concession to Municipality of Bayham, five-five-one-zero-six Vienna Line. And I understand Mike Slaggy is available. Good morning, Mike.
Good morning, Mr. Wording. And thank you. You said my name correctly, which is probably the first time that's ever happened.
I had some assistance.
Anyway, good morning, all. Obviously, Paul is before the OLT this morning on another county matter, so he's asked me to speak to you on this and the other file, and I'm happy to talk you through the applications. So this first application is an amendment to the Municipality of Bayham Official Plan, and it was adopted on October fifth of this year. This amendment was initiated by the municipality in order to bring their plan into conformity with the changes of Bill Twenty-three, which, if you'll recall, in November of two thousand and twenty-two, the provincial government adopted the More Homes Built Faster Act, which included, among other things, a number of changes to the Planning Act. The present amendment would have the effect of modifying policy wording to a number of sections throughout the local official plan, which provide broader permissions for additional residential units. It would limit the applicability of site plan control to those projects with more than ten residential units, would remove the requirement for a statutory public meeting during the draft plan of subdivision review process, and would revise the policy wording related to parkland dedication in line with the adopted bill. The proposed application, I can confirm, went through the standard review process and was supported by both municipal council and staff. We've reviewed the application as well and can confirm that the changes are consistent with the changes adopted through Bill Twenty-three, consistent with the provincial policy statement, the county official plan, as well as the Municipality of Bayham official plan. And we are satisfied that it meets the necessary statutory and policy requirements and therefore recommend approval of the amendment before county committee this morning. And thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mike, for that report. Does anyone have any questions? Okay, standard housekeeping.
Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin approve Official Plan Amendment Number Thirty-four to the Official Plan of the Municipality of Bayham and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act?
Do we have a mover and seconder, please? Counselor Hens will move. Counselor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six-four, the Acting Manager of Planning, Township of Malahide Official Plan Amendment Number Twenty-three, North, Part of Lot Eleven, Concession One, Part Eight, Unregistered Plan eleven R seven-nine-seven-three, Township of Malahide. Mike?
Thank you again. So this application is an official plan amendment to the Township of Malahide Official Plan. This was adopted by Town Council on September twenty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. It's fairly straightforward. Effectively, the amendment seeks to permit a minor settlement, boundary adjustment, and land swap to enable the creation of two new residential lots located along Imperial Road where, in the present case, the boundary cuts across those two proposed lots at an angle. So the amendment proposes to redesignate an area measuring about one hundred and forty-six square meters at the rear of one of the newly proposed lots. It will, excuse me, redesignate it from agriculture to hamlet, and another area of equal size to the rear of the other newly proposed lot will be redesignated from hamlet to agriculture so that there is no net gain or loss of land within the settlement boundary. The amendment is ultimately there to facilitate the creation of more typical rectangular lots of sufficient size and shape and to permit the filling in of a gap in the residential fabric along Imperial Road. Again, I can confirm that the application went through the appropriate application and review process and was supported by both local town council and staff. And we have reviewed the application ourselves again and confirmed that the amendment is consistent with the Planning Act, the provincial policy statement, the county official plan, and the Township of Malahide official plan. And we are satisfied that it meets the necessary statutory and policy requirements, and are again recommending approval of the application. Thank you again, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Mike. Does anyone have any questions or wish to offer comment? Okay, Jenna?
Be it resolved that the Council of the Corporation of the County of Elgin approve Official Plan Amendment Number Twenty-three to the Official Plan of the Township of Malahide, File Number MAOPA three dash twenty-three, and that staff be directed to provide notice of this decision in accordance with the requirements of the Planning Act?
Do we have a mover and seconder? Deputy Warden Jones and I believe it was Counselor Latham? Yes. Will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Brings us to six-five, the Manager of Corporate Facilities, Terrace Lodge Vineyard Replacement, the Tender Award. Good morning.
Good morning. Through Mr. Warden to the members of council, the report before you outlines the bids received for the front entrance soffit and fascia replacement at Terrace Lodge. The work will include the removal of the existing soffit and fascia and installation of a new wood grain product to mimic the addition. Request for quote was advertised in bids and tenders, and six quotes were received from the lowest bid being ninety-five thousand dollars, two hundred and seventy-five from DXT Exteriors. The two thousand and twenty-three budget allocation for this project was approved at eighty-five thousand dollars, which identifies a shortfall to lowest bid plus HST in the amount of eleven thousand dollars, nine hundred and eighty-one, nine hundred and fifty-one, eighty-four cents. Staff is recommending that the budget funds in the total amount of nineteen thousand dollars, six hundred and forty-seven identified in two thousand and twenty-three budget to support the Terrace Lodge elevator upgrades and mechanical equipment replacements be reallocated to fund the project deficit. Thank you, Mr. Ward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions at this time.
Thank you for that report, Ryan. Does anyone have any questions? Okay. Oh, sorry, Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Ward. Just one question. So the elevator, it's done. There's an excess from that one. It's all up to standards now?
There was money allocated for the budget, but it's actually being handled through the de-grant contract of the redevelopment project.
Okay. Anything additional? Okay, Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that Be it resolved that D F T exteriors incorporated be selected for the Terrace Lodge Vineyard Replacement Project, contract number two thousand and twenty-three dash Q thirty-eight at a total price of ninety-five thousand, two hundred and seventy-five dollars exclusive of H S T, and that the remaining budget from the Terrace Lodge elevator upgrades and mechanical equipment replacement projects with a remaining balance of nineteen thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars be reallocated to fund the projected deficit as detailed in the report, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be directed and authorized to sign the contract.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Okay, councillor Widner will move. Councillor Hens will second. All in favor? Okay, that's carried. Thank you. Manager of corporate facilities, operation of the Elgin Manor wastewater treatment plant contract award. Ryan, please.
Through Mr. Warden to the members of council, the report before you is a contract for the operation of the Elgin Manor wastewater treatment plant. The plant is located behind the county's Elgin Manor Long Term Care Home and serves both Royal Lake, Royal Oak Senior Living and South Hope Public School. A request for proposal was advertised on bids and tenders with two contractors downloading the package with one proposal being received from Aqua Ontario Clean Water Agency. The contract is thirty percent higher than the existing contract, twenty percent of which includes the sludge is because the contract now includes the sludge removal. And the other ten percent is due to wage increases. Staff are recommending that the five-year contract be signed from January first, two thousand and twenty-four till December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight at a contract cost of five hundred and fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars. Staff also recommending that to be authorized to extend the contract with Aqua for an updated additional two plus two years terms upon mutual agreement between both parties and satisfactory performance determined by the county. Thank you, Mr. Ward, and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report, Ryan. Does anyone have any questions? Councillor Cookett.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to question I have is the Thames Valley District School Board, Southwood, is it Southwood Public School there? Does the amount of the contract include the money that comes back from the school board or is that in addition?
Great question. All the contracts between both Thames Valley District School Board as well as Royal Oak, it's all based upon flows. I believe there's a difference in contracts between Royal Oak and Thames Valley District School Board. Royal Oak has the a cost for maintenance as well built into their contract. Thames Valley, I don't see that in the contract.
Additional questions? Deputy Warden Jones.
Just a comment. For, I'm not sure how many people use Aqua. I know Southall does and we're seeing increases as well with the new contracts, so it's not it's not out of alignment. We've seen it Southall.
Thank you for that. Any additional questions? Councillor Widner.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. Through you to Mike. Mike, I'm looking under the sludge removal. It looks like there's a pump problem there that the one pump can't keep up with another and is that something they're going to have to upgrade in the future?
The pumps are all adequate. They're all sized for the size of the plant. We went through the entire facility this year, looking at all capital replacements just for capital planning. And we have it on a schedule. Some of the pumps, because they're small, they're having to remove sludge because it's a small plant, although everything's sized smaller. And so the frequency on replacing these pumps is is quite often, like we're replacing some pumps every two years. And we've explored different ideas. Can we, what can we do for longer longevity? And the fact of the matter is size of the plant, it's kind of what we have is what I'm being told from suppliers and contractors and Aqua themselves.
A bigger pump wouldn't fix anything in that one?
No, the bigger the pump, the better they are for grinding everything, all the material coming in. They have other issues when other stuff's being flushed down the the system as well that they're having a hard time clogging. So.
Thank you. Okay, councillor Noble.
Through you, Mr. Warden. Are we, do we cover enough fees from user fees that cover the costs on this?
I believe last year when they redid the contract with Royal Oak, they tried to build that in. I gotta look to see when the next agreement with Thames Valley District School Board is up to see if we can maybe increase theirs as well, but it's all based on flows and a percentage of of total costing.
Okay. Ryan, you you made comment within your report that the contract, this contract includes the sludge removal. How was that dealt with before?
So that was issued as a bill on an ongoing basis. And the reason why we've incorporated into the contract is if they're not maintaining the plant with a proper amount of chemicals, we can have increases amount of of sludge removal. So soon as I took over the wastewater treatment plan, I started receiving all these costings for sludge removal. So I decided to build it into the into the package so that they're responsible for taking care of it. So there's no, it's no hidden costs.
Okay, thank you for that. Any other questions from any member? Okay, Jenna, please.
Be it resolved that Ontario Clean Water Agency Aqua be selected as the operator for the Elgin Manor wastewater treatment plant for a period of five years, beginning January first, two thousand and twenty-four and ending on December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-eight at a total contract price of five hundred fifty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars plus H S T, and that staff be authorized to extend the contract with Ontario Clean Water Agency for up to an additional two, two-year terms upon mutual agreement between both parties and satisfactory performance as determined by the county, and that the warden and chief administrative officer be authorized to sign the contract.
Okay, do we have a mover and secondor for that? Councillor Latham will move. Councillor Noble will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Six point seven, Director of Engineering Services and Emergency Road Slope Repair, Talbot Line, New Glasgow. Good morning, Peter.
Good morning, Mr. Warden. Through you to the rest of county council. This report updates council on recent slope rehabilitation repairs that were completed in the municipality of West Elgin and the right near Port Glasgow. Council may recall, a couple of years ago, we had a slide very close to this location. There are some very steep inclinations on these road slopes at this location. And this was another repair that that was noted actually on October the twenty-fourth by local municipal staff. Council staff attended the site immediately thereafter, identified this was a very similar issue that had occurred just a few hundred meters down the road, so we utilized the exact same repair strategy as recommended to us on that previous repair. Unfortunately, I think predominantly because of the time of year, we were able to secure some contractors on a time and materials basis in the last two weeks and we were able to complete complete the repair. The the estimated quoted value of the repair in the report is a hundred thousand dollars. Now that we're getting prices in, that's closer to about ninety-five thousand dollars. There was an existing budget that remained from that previous repair with about forty-five thousand dollars in it, so we have about a fifty thousand dollar shortfall in the budget. And that can be accommodated by reallocating funds in an anticipated surplus for the resurfacing of County Road Number Four Sunset Road. Part of this repair procedure, we included an asphalt curb on the side of the road to direct flows to one outlet, so it wouldn't just go over to the slope potentially exasperating future rehabilitation requirements. You will see in the proposed two thousand and twenty-four capital budget that we intend to do a similar treatment to the east of this location, a few hundred meters to direct flow to riprop shoots so that we can hopefully be proactive and mitigate any future slope rehabilitations required in this area. I'd be happy to answer any questions in this regard.
Thank you, Peter. Yes, councillor Latham. Yep.
Through you, Mr. Warden. But I'd like to thank you for acting in a timely fashion. And we, you know, West Elgin couldn't ask for a better service than what you provided. So I thank you for that.
Thank you for those comments, councillor Latham. Yes, councillor Sloan.
Peter, with respect to prevention, are there other areas like maybe because I'm relatively new to this game? If we're looking at situations like this, is there any sort of an audit with respect to areas? And I know you've got huge, you know, numbers of roads and kilometers and stuff. Is that a is that a question with respect to how some of these might, before they get to this part where it's an actual collapse, is there any kind of ongoing preventative maintenance as possible? Thank you.
That's a good question because for a number of years, the county did experience some road slope failures at different locations. We had a big one in Highway nineteen just north of Port Burwell. We had them on Glenary Line a number of locations. What happens when the road is artificially built up in a fill section? The proper slope inclination should be about a two to one. As vegetation grows on those slopes and they hold more moisture and weight, some people also perceive trees to be beneficial on steep slopes. They aren't always because of the weight and the moisture they also carry. So these slope failures are inevitable. However, as far as an audit goes, we are aware of seven locations where we had previous slope failures. I can think of Belmont Road and New Serum and a number of others that don't immediately come to mind. So part of our our road inspections carried out quarterly as part of the road maintenance agreement, we will stop and review previous known locations. And there's one or two that I know about that are potential candidates for failure and sometimes it's 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 more reasonable to keep monitoring those and not take any evasive action until something does occur. So we're aware of these situations, but inevitably they will show up. And it's important that we continue to work with our local municipalities when they identify something, we're out there to address them. This was more surface, more of a surface erosion than anything. It was only a couple of meters deep. It was the actual top vegetated slope that had slid down. It wasn't more of a of a structural slope failure where you would see a whole cavity of the road collapse. So we're aware of it. We keep monitoring it and and we do inventory areas of previous locations. Please.
Through you, Warden. Thanks, Peter. So quarterly is the answer. We do quarterly checks of of areas like this one. So just so that I know from my knowledge, three or four times a year, someone is looking at these areas that are of import, if that's fair. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for that. Any other questions? Comments? Okay. Thank you.
Be it resolved that the report titled Emergency Road Slope Repair Talbot Line, New Glasgow dated November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three from the Director of Engineering Services be received and filed, and that project costs that exceed the Talbot Line Slope Repair six-two-zero-zero-two-one-zero-nine budget be allocated from the Road Four Resurfacing six-zero-zero-four-two-three-three-two project.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Councillor Latham and Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. Brings us to section seven. Council Correspondence, seven point two items for information, the consent agenda. Does anyone have any comments they wish to offer on any of these five items? Yes, councillor Cookett?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Warden. I'd like to make a comment about the the last item, I think it's the last one. Fixing the Long Term Care Amendment Act. I'm always curious about the title of fixing the Long Term Care Amendment Act because we've had reports of hundreds of fixes for our long-term care homes here. And this one, this particular one, which deals with till death do us part, I guess, for couples live together in the long-term care homes, seems to have stalled quite a bit. And, you know, we were taught in school that when you have the government pass a bill, there's a first reading, which is kind of to tell people what the bill is about, and the second reading is the meat of the bill. Once it passes second reading, it really should become law fairly quickly. However, this particular bill has stalled in committee. I guess it hasn't even gone to committee for over several years. So I really support the the action taken by the council of the corporation of the city of Cambridge, and I would like to see the Elgin County Council send a letter of support to whoever, I guess the government would be the one that supports this kind of of action that we would take action right away on this particular bill, which is stalled in in government.
Thank you for that. Additional comments? Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Warden. I would definitely support this. I know Southall Council supported this motion last night at our meeting. I think it's, I think Elgin County is, in our homes, we do a great job of trying to keep husbands and wives together as much as we can. And I think it's kind of appalling that in some cases that isn't the case at some long-term care homes. So I think it needs to be put in writing from the province to ensure that it does happen.
Thank you for those comments. Any additional? Yes, councillor Shigeru.
Mr. Warden, thank you. I just wanted, regarding the correspondence from BAM, I just wanted to confirm that because there are two parts. One, the safety concern is related to speeding, which will go to the Police Services Board. But the other concerns to me have more to do with signage or perhaps deficiencies in sightlines and stuff. So I just wanted to confirm that staff will look into it and be able to report back.
Thank you for that. And you're absolutely correct. I know it's the sixty zone has been extended out north of Lightline. It's quite a long zone and then trans, you know, it transfers to a fifty kilometer zone. I don't know how. And we've talked about around this table before. I don't know how you can get it any clearer. Slow down. And you're coming down a steep hill with a bend at the bottom. And they still there's the odd one that still won't. But if I agree, if if staff can look into it, if there's something that needs to be done, there's pros and cons. Put a flashing light up, the neighbor right there is going to see a flashing light all night. So I don't know what the answer is, but I think Peter's probably got some comments to offer.
So any of us who travel down Plank Road do do understand at the bottom of the hill, there is a pretty sharp curve. And if you aren't doing the speed limit, if you're doing probably more than sixty kilometers an hour, it's very uncomfortable. If it was slippery conditions, you probably couldn't negotiate the roadway. The reason there aren't chevrons on that curve is because it is within a fifty kilometer an hour zone and it's within a built-up area. So it is signed correctly. However, we've had incidents on other county roads, most recently in Port Bruce, where experience tells us maybe the traveling public requires a little more guidance. So I would be happy to take a direction from this council to work with our local municipal partner in BAM at the county's expense to install some Chevron signs on the curve. I think that would be a prudent response to these concerns.
Deputy Warden Jones.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Warden. I don't know how you fix people that can't slow down. On Wonderland Road in the last week, we've had at least two recorded accidents. I know there's a third one that put her up in the middle of the field and was able to get out themselves because they were a four-wheel drive truck. It doesn't matter how much signage you put on that road, people still don't get it. Now, I don't know how you fix that. I know I had a call from a distraught person that lives on the corner there after those three accidents and she's asking, they live there, and she's asking about rumble strips. And I said, do you really want a rumble strip outside your house? She says, well, I don't want to go out and find somebody dead in my field. I don't know. That's I don't know if you have any comment on that, but I, you just can't fix stupid. That's unfortunate, but on the other note, just want to recognize Swift, Southall's part of the last project in the north side of our township and I know that councillor Shigeru asked for some participants in the light box. And I know at least one that has, I think, two others are supposed to contact whoever to submit that their speed. I'm just wondering when the south side of the township gets somewhat broadband. Pardon? Well, maybe you have an answer, maybe a surprise, a nice Christmas present would be great.
I appreciate your comments on the Swift program. It's interesting when when you asked for participants, I thought of an individual right at the end of the Corinth area, actually North Hall, and he was quick to take you up on it. And hopefully that gives you a good read. That's that's the end of the line. So if the speed's good there, it should be good throughout. So hopefully more participants will take up and just so that you can monitor the ISP providers are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Great. Okay, we've got some interesting things here on this particular motion. You've been taking notes, Jenna? Okay. First of all, I believe just to encapsulate Okay, first of all, I believe just to encapsulate perhaps some direction to staff to work trying to mitigate signage or something in Vienna. And then, of course, to support the resolution from the city of Cambridge. All right, let's hear what you got.
Be it resolved that correspondence item seven point two point one to seven point two point five be received and filed. And that staff be directed to work with the municipality of Bayham to investigate options to address signage concerns on Plank Road at Shoot Line and Northern Vienna Bridge and report the findings at a future meeting of county council. And that Elgin County Council support the resolution from the council of the corporation of the city of Cambridge regarding support of Bill twenty-one fixing Long-Term Care Amendment Act. And that a copy of this resolution be sent to the Premier of Ontario, Member of Parliament Karen Beckio and all Ontario municipalities.
Sounds like you've captured it. A mover and secondor for that. Counselor Noble and Counselor Cookett will second. All in favor? That's carried. Thank you. Brings us to section eight, other business. Statements and inquiries by members. Notice of motion. Matters of urgency. Glad there's nothing urgent. Brings us to closed meeting items.
Be it resolved that we do now proceed into closed meeting session in accordance with the Municipal Act to discuss the following matters under Municipal Act Section two thirty-nine-two. Closed meeting item number one, October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three, closed meeting minutes. And closed meeting item number two, O L T twenty-three dash seven seven zero, section two thirty-nine-two F.
Do we have a mover and secondor for that? Counselor Hens and I believe Deputy Warden Jones will second. All in favor? That's carried. While we're going in silent mode, can we take a short break? Okay. Welcome back. Motion to rise and report?
Be it resolved that we do now rise and report?
Mover and secondor, Counselor Sloan? Counselor Noble, all in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number one.
Be it resolved that the October twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-three closed meeting minutes be adopted as amended?
Counselor Sloan? And Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? That's carried. Closed meeting item number two.
Be it resolved that staff proceed as directed?
Counselor Shiger? All in favor? That is carried. Motion to adopt recommendations for the committee of the whole?
Be it resolved that we do now adopt recommendations of the committee of the whole?
Mover and secondor, please. Counselor Hens and Deputy Warden Jones? All in favor? That's carried. Confirmation bylaw?
Be it a first, second and third read of bylaw number twenty-three dash forty-two being a bylaw to confirm proceedings of the municipal council of the corporation of the county of Elgin at the November fourteenth, twenty twenty-three meeting.
Mover and secondor, please. Counselor Latham? Counselor Noble? All in favor? That's carried, which brings us to the adjournment.
Be it resolved that we do now adjourn at ten twenty-seven A M to meet again on November twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three at nine o'clock A M?
We have a mover and secondor, Counselor Whitner? And I believe Counselor Sloan will second that. All in favor? And that's carried. Thank you all for your attention this morning. It was a good meeting and have a good day.